All right. Call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Town Council Meeting of Southwest Ranches. If we can please call the roll.
I'm sorry, Mayor Breckus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Albritton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Kuzinski.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Excellent. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Very good. It's great to see a, pretty much a full house tonight. It's awesome. All right. So our first item is a quasi judicial item. So Richard, let me turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Please be advised that the following item on the council agenda is quasi judicial in nature. All witnesses who will testify on any item in this portion of the agenda will be sworn. The applicant has the burden of proof, and after the applicant's concluding remarks, the hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony, material, or argument will be allowed unless the council chooses. All evidence relied upon by reasonably prudent persons in the conduct of affairs may be considered in these proceedings. Anyone representing an organization must present written evidence of his or her authority to speak on behalf of the organization. And we're ready to proceed.
Okay.
Just having some technical difficulties. We're trying to work through there.
Yep.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of a phasing agreement for Archbishop Edward A. McCarthy High School relating to its amended site plan, which was approved on June 25th, 2020 pursuant to Resolution Number 2020-043, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Very good. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion approved.
Okay. So I think we need to bring the applicant up? Or how do we? Oh, yeah, we need to do the swearing in.
Anyone that is going to testify on this particular item, if you would please stand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a simple item. You already made a motion on it, so I don't have anything to add unless you have any questions.
Okay. Does the applicant have any, any comments?
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Tony Misero. I'm one of the administrators at Archbishop McCarthy High School. And not to bore everybody, I've been there for the first, all 25 years, so it's been quite an experience. I'd like to thank the city of Southwest Ranches for not only your guidance, but also your patience with us, because we had an agreement that we were fulfilling, and it's been quite a challenge because of different outside entities, not within Southwest Ranches, but other places. We would like to, again, ask for this extension for one more year. We feel very confident we're in a good situation with the current agreement, that we can move forward. And the purpose of this is to add up to four portables to decrease the class sizes. We are not increasing enrollment above what we've already agreed to. We just want to decrease the class sizes to make it a little bit more comfortable for our students. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tony. All right. Any discussion from the council?
Mayor, before you take the vote, I will just add that, just for informational purposes, the school, it's a, it's a dynamic development program that they've got, and, you know, they build facilities as sponsors come forward, money becomes available to fulfill needs. And so while you are voting to extend the site plan, phasing agreement, they're already working on the next modification, so this will bridge that gap to keep it active. But you can expect in the next, probably early fall, you know, to see the next modification that they have lined up.
Okay.
They're looking at an indoor practice facility, athletic practice facility, and they had proposed a weight room expansion, and they may use, they may propose an athletic office expansion in that area with some slight changes in floor area and that type of thing. But just to let you know, you'll be seeing something in the coming months.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Any, any members of the public wish to comment on this item?
New Hallingworth, 199th Avenue. The only question I have is on the four temporary portables. How temporary are they? And I'd like an end date for when they turn into pumpkins again instead of the carriages. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Any other public comment on that? Seeing none, public comment closed. Tony, can you speak to that? Kind of what the life, life journey is for those portables?
Within the current site plan that we are asking for a year extension, it's also there, there's, I think, 20 some odd dollars, I forget the square footage, as a theater. So we're using this as a bridge to get to that point as fundraising continues. So I would say five years, maybe, if God, God willing, to help bridge the gap to get to that point. And that theater will satisfy our fine arts departments, and we would add additional classrooms with that to fill the build out of the, of the, the school building itself.
Gotcha. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Any other comment from the council? Questions? Seeing none, we're good. Russell, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton.
Yes.
Mayor Breckus.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Very good. Thank you. All right. So we'll continue with our regular meeting. Before we do, I just want to just recognize Representative Robin Bartman is here. See, Robin, if you just want to come up, maybe just say two words. We have, are you gonna? There we go.
Hi, everybody. I am so happy to be here. If you want this, very brief, I'll give you abbreviated versions.
Yeah, please.
I know, I got it. It's the end of the summer, almost summertime. I'm Robin Bartman. I'm your state representative. I'm happy to announce that I passed four pieces of legislation this session. Three signed, one still on the desk and waiting for signature. The one I really want to talk about is, the big one was Kid Care, which is expansion. It gives working families access to health care for their children. It raises the threshold to 300% above the poverty level. So what happened is people could, you know, if you, before the threshold was 200% of the poverty level, so if you just took a 50 cent raise an hour, your child would get thrown off that plan. So you would go from $20 a month to $259 per child, which was an 1,100% increase. So this bill is really about helping the working families of Florida have access to affordable health care coverage for their children. It creates a glide path as the families make more, as they get closer to the 300%. The cost for the insurance also increases so that when they get to the end of that fiscal cliff, they can take care of their children. So that was signed by the governor today, bipartisan piece of legislation. I want to thank Speaker Renner. He really was a champion and, and made this happen. I passed it for FRS so people can retire. Another one that's going to impact your city is unlawful dumping. It has to do with trespassing and unlawful dumping with the special districts, the South Broward Drainage Districts. We actually have pictures from your canals with dead carcasses, furniture, cement. So now we've created a stricter law so that can be enforced. And the most important thing has, came out of Southwest Ranches, and that's why I want to talk about it, because I sat in a living room here in Southwest Ranches and met one of your students here, and her mother, and the student has Down Syndrome and goes to Hawksbluff Elementary. And her mom spoke to me about how hard it was when she was in pre-K, because she was in ESE pre-K, and it was a better decision to retain her in pre-K so she could get the prerequisite skills, right? And Anna, Anna did great because she got that, those prerequisite skills, but when she got, you know, when she started going through the process, there was a possibility that she could be retained a second time because of the way the People Progression Plan is written. So out of the living room of Southwest Ranches residents, we passed Senate Bill 290, which actually now changes the People Progression Plan so that parents have a choice. And if you have a child with a disability and you want to be able to retain them in kindergarten so they have the prerequisite skills and a strong foundation to move forward, you can, and you don't have to worry about them getting retained again before the third grade. So it was a really good session for me. I got all of your appropriations unanimously passed by the, by both the Republicans, Democrats in the House and the Senate. Unfortunately, the governor vetoed all, like, a ton of water projects. We're not really sure what's behind it, but all the water and flooding projects for, no matter which party you were, a lot of those were vetoes. We're just going to come back next year. It's not a problem. We got this, and it's an honor to represent this town, and thank you for everything you do. And for the residents out there, there are a lot of issues with property insurance. I voted against the bill last session, this last session, because it didn't have any guarantees to protect you, the consumers. So I was very upset about that, and people are having to sell their homes. I have, if your home is over $700,000 to rebuild, you're not even, you don't even have access to citizens insurance, which I'm working on changing. I've been working on it for two years. So if you have any issues, you call my office. Google Robin Bartman. We'll get you to the Insurance Commissioner. We'll do whatever we have to do to help you, contact citizens, just whatever you need. If I can't help you myself, I'll find someone who can. And my cell phone number for all the residents is 954-668-3662. Again, I love representing this town. I love everything you do, and I'm happy to be part of this community. Thank you all so much.
Great. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you, Robin.
Always appreciate your support. All right. Onto what has to be one of my most favorite things every year, to do this. We have a, a great education board that works hard year round, doing a lot of things to raise money, and you all, as residents, do a lot of things to participate and to support them in all the activities that they do and all the ways that they work to support our students and the scholarships. So this evening, we, Kathy is going to be coming up and presenting the scholarships, and this is, this is a fantastic evening, and we're looking forward to it. Kathy, I'm just going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Can you hear me with my fancy microphone?
Yes.
I would ask the coun, the council if it's okay if I turn around and face the kids for this one event.
Absolutely.
Can I spin this?
Yeah, yeah, it's been, should spin around.
Get up here and redecorate. Hi, everyone. My name is Kathy Sullivan. I am the Schools and Education Advisory Chair. Anyone who's been here before knows, I always say this is my favorite night. I have such a connection to so many kids in the room, and I'm one of those people that can love other people's kids, and I love all the kids. And this has been such a privilege for me to be a part of this scholarship for so many years and to watch the kids grow up and see them year after year. I made a couple notes, because normally I just stand up here and emotionally just say how much I love you and give out the awards, but I wanted to make sure, hit a few high notes. I'm Kathy, I think I got that one. One of the things is, I was a rancher kid, and I think that's kind of what makes some of this so special to me. My folks moved out here in 82. I went to Western High School, the first class that went all four years when you used to, so I live out in Rolling Oaks, so we used to take Griffin Road to Flamingo Road, Flamingo Road to State Road 84, State Road 84 back to 136th Avenue to get to school. There was no I-75, no Weston, none of that. And I have such fantastic memories of not just the kids, the rancher kids, but the adults. I'm still friends to this day with the grown-up neighbors that live next door to me, and I think that's such a tribute to our neighborhood and our residents, that we stayed in touch, that we've stayed in the communities, and it makes it really special to me. I believe in the power of small towns, and I believe in small-town kids, and that's what we're here for tonight. I look at this group of young people tonight. I know them. I love them. I've been room mom for probably three different kids in this room. I've been to class parties with most of the kids in this room. I've been PTA moms with half the parents in here over the years, and I don't know what I'm going to do when all my contacts have grown up and I don't look out and know the kids personally, because these are the kids that my kids grew up with, and it's really special. I want to talk about the scholarship and how, this scholarship is funded by the residents. It, we have a budget for when we need to spend money from the town, but every dollar earned, every dollar that we give away to the students is earned by the Schools and Education Advisory Board. We do fundraisers, we beg for money, we do a lot of different things, and not only is that a testament to the kids that have raised about $30,000 a year in the last several years, but it's a testament to the residents and the people in our community and the community service that they do. And I, I thought of a couple of examples that were really neat, and of course, one is the Sikh. The Sikhs are a big part of our community, and my daughter made masks during the pandemic, and I think she ended up making 2,650 masks that she gave away for free. And she put out the word to the neighborhood, "I need some help." And a bunch of the ladies in Rolling Oaks, we lived there, one lady cut fabric, one lady cut elastic, and someone at the church at the Sikh said, "We have some ladies that sew." And there was a lady in Miami that must have made 200 masks for Madison's project. Never met us, didn't know us, but just was a part of the community. When the scholarship, when there were so many kids this year for the scholarship, this is probably our largest group of scholarship recipients this year, we put out the word, the HOA, specific association. They wrote checks. They wrote checks, $100, $200, whatever it was. They came together to be a part of the community and part of this scholarship. It truly is a labor of love from the community, and I'm so proud to be a part of that, and I hope you guys are too, because most of you out here, I've given you a phone call, I've either begged your community service hours, or a check from you, or a help, or to stand in line, or something, so we truly, truly appreciate it. I have a picture. Did they, did they get the picture, you know? So this is kind of cool. Fun thing on. A lot of the kids, when I say that these kids grew up with my kids, I've watched these kids. So if you look up in the picture, I think there's 13 kids. Seven of them, or nine of them are Southwest Ranches residents. The rest of them have grandparents that live in Southwest Ranches. This was an Arbor Day contest Southwest Ranches put on. Is December still in here? No. Well, she did this contest. It was so cute. And so I think out of the nine Southwest Ranches residents in that picture, seven of them have received or will receive the scholarship tonight. If you're in that picture and then in this room, would you stand up? Savannah, you must be about five years old in that picture, and she's graduating, she just graduated from high school. So you guys can sit down. Thank you. I just wanted to show everybody, we, rancher kids are rancher kids for life, and this is what happens, is they participate, and their parents or their neighbors or I drag them to every event from the time they're five years old to the time they're in college. And so it's not, these kids, they're required to do 40 hours of community service to get this scholarship, and they have to do that for school, too, but it's not the same 40 hours. The 40 hours for this scholarship is all in service to our town. And so what's kind of neat about it, as you can see from the picture, these kids have a lot more than 40 hours because they've been doing it since they were five years old, and I just love that. And I could go on about that forever, but, let's see. I, so all the kids are asked to write an essay, and it's kind of neat because it's not a fancy essay, it's not some world, question of world peace and all. It's a question about the town of Southwest Ranches and their lives in it, and I'm only going to read one sentence from each one, but I think it really tells you where these kids are at, and if you will just bear with me one minute. It's just one minute from each, but this is them talking about their lives in Southwest Ranches and this scholarship. So we'll start with one. "Three things I love about Southwest Ranches would be the love for each neighbor, the involvement opportunities, and the status and influence this community continues to hold. I have seen the people in the town of Southwest Ranches always help each other out when it comes to neighbors or the community itself. Three things I love about Southwest Ranches and the neighbors, the rural lifestyle and the board. My neighbors have always been very generous, are the first to lend a helping hand. I want to become an engineer. I want to get married, have a family. I want to have friends like the ladies in Rolling Oaks, and I want to live a happy life. Earning this scholarship will help ease some of the financial burden, which will help bring me one step closer to achieving my dream. I love our great neighbors. Southwest Ranches is a place where hard-working people come to settle down and raise their families. When I first heard of the Southwest Ranches scholarship, I felt at ease reading about the benefits. For a moment, I started to daydream of what it would be like to win this. It wasn't a lot of money, but it was enough to kick off my freshman year of college, and it would allow me the chance to breathe and get settled in my new environment. Southwest Ranches, located in the heart of South Florida, is a hidden gem known for its small-town charm and allure." I could go on and on, but I will stop. But I love it, and I hope you, I hope you understand that this was the theme throughout. Actually, there were two themes. One was, "I don't want to go into debt," and the other was really true stuff about living in Southwest Ranches and their neighbors. And essay after essay was about things happening in the community and the neighbors bringing their chainsaws and their shovels and just going out and helping everybody, and it's such a testament to our neighbors. So congratulations to all of you, whether you have kids in this community or you've just been neighbors to kids in this community. So without further ado, I would like to give away our scholarships. Everyone couldn't make it. A couple of the kids have already started summer classes, and so I'm going to call everybody's name, and if you are here, please of course come up, and then we're going to do a line here and take some pictures. If anybody on the Schools and Education Advisory Board here, do you want to come up here with me for this? Do you guys want to pass these among yourselves so you can stand them while I call them? And some kids sent a parent or a friend to pick them up, so that's okay. So our first recipient is Cassandra. Mom is here to represent her. Yes, she's in school right now. Gabby Morales. You know, you have to hug me first. Oh, but I have to, I'm tethered. Isabel Ribario. Oh, Gabby, if you want to stay up here, come over and take a picture, just like, step over there. Isabella Martinez. I think that she's in school right now also. Jacob Hurst. You have to hug me, too. Jenna Kipple. Jessica Hartman. Her dad's here to accept. Julia Kipple. Justin Freeman. He's one of our volunteer firefighters. Do you want to accept for him? Caitlin Mina, Miana. I think the Garner girls can't be here, but Catherine Garner. Madison Sullivan. Megan Laffey. Michaela Freeman, she couldn't come either. Malani Martinez. Sean Laffey. Mom's accepting, or, okay. So those are our scholarship recipients that could, oh, why is she not on my list? Ashley Garner. I don't think she could make it tonight either, though. Okay, I'd like, I want to get the kids together for a picture with the board, and if the council doesn't mind coming down also. Or just stay up there.
Yeah, let's stand up here. Yeah. Maybe you guys can come back in a couple of steps. We may.
I'm fine.
Get up here. There you go. That way a little bit.
There won't be none.
Kathy, can we just kind of move everybody this way a little bit so we're centered a little bit more? There we go.
There he is.
Russell's prepared to talk.
Okay. Okay. There we go. Now we're getting it.
Congratulations, folks.
Congratulations.
And all the scholarship, oh, I have a mess up here anyway. All the scholarship recipients, the town understands you're, have college coming up, you're starting, you have jobs. You're welcome to come outside and take pictures. They will not be offended if you don't stay for the meeting. I promise. Every year, everybody goes outside and takes pictures. Thank you again for coming, and thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy. And thank you to the whole board. We really appreciate all that you guys do, and thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Please, three quarters of the room.
That was an amazing picture that she found, all the kids and the old council and the old South Broward.
I know, it was in the old, old townhouse, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Interesting.
I just have the dumbest thought in the world.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're just trying to still isolate that noise and apologize.
Somebody's... Yeah. It kicks. All right, everybody turn your mics off. You can use mine. You can take mine.
Yeah, it's all right.
Oh, thanks. No, I'm not using that one. You have to come up with another one.
I think that's yours, Russell.
Not happening.
All right, there we go. Awesome. Sound okay?
Yeah.
We have two speakers, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Yes, go ahead and pay with public comment.
Noel Hollingsworth.
Noel Hollingsworth, good evening. Tonight, I want to talk to you about Griffin Road.
Excuse me just for a second, Noel. If we can have order, so we can have the public comment. Appreciate it, thank you.
Well, start me over. I'd like my 12 seconds back. Anyway, Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I'd like to talk to you about the foliage that exists on Griffin Road in the burms on the south side of the road. Over the years, I've watched it slowly disappear in front of nurseries that wanted access to the visual, churches that wanted access to the visual. And now we have a development that wants access to the visual. It started two weeks ago when driving east, and I noticed that in front of the church, which is right there at Bonneville Boulevard, the berm had been stripped clean, and there was high palmettos in there and cypress trees, several of them had been removed. And so I called Town Hall, and I reported it. Turns out, the church didn't have a permit. I thought it was the development that had done it, but it was the church that had done it. And they removed about $10,000 to $20,000 worth of material, plant material, if they had to replace it at the size they were at. The agreement the town supposedly has come to is that they can put these cheap little plants up on the top of it, and they will maintain it forever that way, and they give the town a drainage easement. Well, I'm sorry, I don't agree with that. Freddie Fisickelli fought long and hard with Broward County and the MPO to get all of that foliage on Griffin Road, at great expense to the county. And I have watched it disappear over the years, and I'm finally tired of it. I think that when someone illegally removes it, they should have to be putting it back, the type and size that they removed. If you want to see what size it was, just look on the other side of the entranceway to the new development right there, and you'll see how big the palmettos were. The second part is, and that is this week, is the development in putting in their new driveway today, removed most of the palmettos to the west of their driveway on their berm, and cut back the others to about two feet tall, maybe three feet. And then put in little Weston-style plants on both sides of their driveway, where we have said that any of the foliage that is put in should be native and drought-resistant. And that was one of the things that Freddie fought for, and we have put into our parks, native and drought-resistant. Seriously, can I finish? They also, to the east end of their property, removed about 20-foot of material and put in cute little plants right there. They also put in their fence a week or so ago, and put these signs up, if you remember the signage that they had right there on the fence when it was right by the sidewalk, they put that on their front of their project right there, which we told them that wasn't allowed, still isn't allowed. And the other thing is, they put Royal Palms on the outside in the swale area. If a resident had done that, the town would come under, and they'd be buried underneath Town Hall. So you've got them removing material, putting up wrong real estate signs, plus they have two eight-by-eight wood signs out by the sidewalks, plus these banners on their side, on their fence line. All of that's illegal unless they have a permit from the town, and I was told they don't have a permit from the town. Why is this being allowed within our town? I'd like each council member to go out and take a look at it and say, "Oh, that's wonderful. I think the rest of us should look like this, and all of our burms should look just like the ones in Weston," because then we can just tear it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel.
Mayor, final speaker is Richard Ramcharatar.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. My name is Richard Ramcharatar, Southwest 166th Avenue, Southwest Ranches. This evening, I would like to speak to you and everyone listening on YouTube briefly about municipal solid trash incineration. Firstly, it's one of the most expensive and polluting ways to manage waste and to make energy. The trash incineration industry uses other terms to make it sound good, such as resource recovery, trash to steam, waste to energy, and energy from waste. All of these terms are untruthful and misleading. There are other types of incinerator technologies out there as well, like gasification, pyrolysis, and plasma arc. These technologies are legally defined in the U.S. and in Europe, and regulated as Incinerators destroy the resources that are better reused. They are not renewable energy, they're dirtier than coal, and certainly bad for people's health if you're living near to one, like I used to. And it's far more expensive than landfilling. Now, you hear a lot about, you've heard some people talk about landfilling producing global warming gases like CO2 and methane, but incineration also produces methane, it produces CO2, dioxins and ferrins, which get released into the atmosphere, and it also produces very toxic ash, which is used as cover, and that can eventually leach into our groundwater and contaminate our groundwater. And if that happens, I've heard discussion about bringing water into Southwest Ranches to the tune of $1 billion to cover that cost to do so. So what does that mean for everyone if something like that were to happen? That means our rural lifestyle will be destroyed. We can't have animals, and a lot of people probably would pack up and leave. So, you know, I implore our council, and I know that you guys are against this, I implore you to really monitor this closely and do everything possible to prevent this from coming into the Broward County landfill. The Monarch Hill landfill is off the board, according to the Arcadis report, and if I'm wrong, you can correct me. So, you know, this, I think it's not being spoken directly and told to us, the truth is not being spoken by those folks who are going to be working on this. We need the truth forthcoming, and let everyone know what's headed our way, so this way we can organize and resist this. Mary Ann Allen and I are forming a group named Broward Clean Air for Residents, which is being supported by Mikey Wall, the Director of Energy Justice Network. Over 270 grassroots organizations are associated with Mikey Wall, and they receive support and guidance in their local areas to educate, inform, and organize against incinerators of all sorts. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Richard. All right, public comment is closed. Do you want to respond to those? Russell, I think you had some, done some research from the staff, and can you respond a little bit to what's going on there at Kai Estates and the church that's next door?
Certainly, Mayor, yes. So while Andy was away, I did receive a call from Noel, spoke to Noel about this particular issue, and we looked into it. And there's, it's a twofold issue. So essentially, the church, which I believe is Iglesia Batista, I believe is the name of the church, apparently did remove some fire bush that was on their berm that was there. Noel had also reported that they had removed some saw palmetto and some other trees that were there. I was made aware of it, looked into it, spoke to Julio about it, and apparently there was discussion with code about this particular issue, and they did make contact with the church. And what was, I guess, discussed was the fact that, first of all, the church was contrite about removing what they had removed and was looking to resolve this issue with the town. And looking into it a little bit further, it appears that there wasn't saw palmetto that was removed, there was some trees there, I'm not quite sure, December could speak to this a little bit more eloquently as to the type of tree that might have been there on the corner there. But the bottom line is that we looked at the code and what it speaks to related to the tree canopy and what it says as far as tree removal and replacement, and it doesn't specify that what has to be replaced there or what needs to be replaced there is exactly the same type, which I think is what the resident is referring to. What the resident is looking for is a replacement of exactly what was there before. The code doesn't specify that. What the code specifies is that the tree canopy has to be restored. And the plan that has been agreed to by the church and by the town is that we would allow them to put replacements there that would basically replace the tree canopy. In addition to that, they have agreed to provide a drainage easement for us, and also, more importantly, or as important, is to maintain the property there in perpetuity. So we have asked our town attorney's office to produce an agreement that the parties would sign, and once that agreement is created, we'll have the church sign off on that, and they'll agree to maintain the property in perpetuity. In going out there, I went out there personally to visit the site, because I did get further discussions with the resident. He mentioned that Kai Estates had also done some tree removal illegally, he alleged, and so we looked into that. And just today, did discover with Kai and speaking to their representatives today, that they did receive a tree removal permit from Broward County. So I just received that information late this afternoon. I actually have copies of that information here. They also did have a landscape plan that was approved by the county for the plantings that they put there. So that information is here, I have that, I have not distributed it yet, because I just got it, just printed it off right before the meeting, but I will certainly give the resident, as well as the rest of council, a copy of that. So it appears, without, you know, looking at the plan, again, I just got it just a little while ago, but it appears that the development of Kai Estates removed the material that they removed in accordance with the county plan, which, again, this is county right-of-way, so that's the appropriate agency that would have approved that permit and that landscape plan. It would not have come to the town, because it's not town property, it's county right-of-way. So it appears that the development of Kai Estates did do what they were supposed to do, what they were required to do, and it will have to be inspected by the county as well as part of their development plan. As far as the church, again, I went out there with Manfred Villette, our deputy code director, and I know that December went out there as well. We took pictures. The material that was removed, from my understanding, and I'll ask December to come up in a minute, was fire bush that was removed from the air, from the berm site. They put calusa at the top of the berm, which will grow and provide a buffer, and there may have been a tree or two there on the corner, on the very corner there with the church property, the entrance of the church property. Those trees may have been in very bad repair or very bad condition, I should say, because our maintenance crews haven't been able to get into that area. And so that perhaps kind of precipitated why they may not have been in good shape. So that's probably why, I'm just surmising why they would have removed those, that material, if it was not doing well, not thriving. But again, the agreement that we've come to with the church is that they will maintain the property in perpetuity and do some other plantings there.
Great.
So if you don't mind, if we can have December come up, unless you...
I think we're, I mean, I'm fine. December, do you want to add to that?
If you have any questions.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. I think we're good. But I appreciate all the work and research and follow-up on that. It's awesome, and thank you, December, as well.
Just a question for Russell.
Sure.
Russell, the church you're referring to, that's the one that's what, due west of Kai?
That's correct. That's correct.
Good enough, thank you.
Yes.
No questions.
Great, all right, thank you. And for the incinerator, Richard, we really appreciate you, Mary Ann, and I know others, getting involved in keeping us up to date, doing a lot of research, and keeping us informed. So thank you. All right, public comment is closed. Any board reports this evening?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council. George Morris, Chair of the Drainage Board. We had a meeting just the other night. Some of the highlights of the meeting, basically where we talked about the fill permitting and talking about different options with stockpiling, the permitting, a removal of illegal fill, additional fill levels, you know, we have one, two, three, notifying adjacent properties of the activities, the fill permits that are being issued, as well as talked about posting fill permits on the town website and also requiring inspections. We basically finished that aspect of our review of those items, and we made a motion to forward it to the council, so when you guys decide to talk about it, if it's not tonight's agenda, I didn't see, but nonetheless. So that was pretty much the summation of the board meeting. Again, I just want to invite the public out to our board meeting. We basically meet on the third Tuesday of each month. Feel free to come out. If you have any problems or concerns with regards to flooding, we're more than happy to hear it. So that concludes my board report for the Drainage Board. The Astronite Foundation, I'll just jump over there if you don't mind. Again, I just want to remind folks, the carnival coming up in January, it's going to be from January 11th to the 15th of 2024. Again, we're still looking for vendors and food trucks, et cetera. We do have a website set up, swrcountryfair.com. If you log on to that website there, you'll be greeted with a red tab that says, "Want to be a vendor?" You can click on that, follow the directions, you can put in your information, we'll get the message, and we'll see what we can do to help, you know, the town residents. If anybody has a business, someone wants to set up promotion and daycares, whatever it is, horse camps, anything like that, we're open. Again, behind me, we have the Tree of Life that's filling up fast, so if any residents want to post some things there, or put their businesses, or put names of people that have done anything in the town, we're open for that as well. There's different levels and sizes of different leaves and acorns, et cetera. Also had a conversation with a contractor and... So that concludes my board report for the Drainage Board. The Astronite Foundation, I'll just jump over there if you don't mind. Again, I just want to remind folks, the carnival coming up in January, it's going to be from January 11th to the 15th of 2024. Again, we're still looking for vendors and food trucks, et cetera. We do have a website set up, swrcountryfair.com. If you log on to that website there, you'll be greeted with a red tab that says, "Want to be a vendor?" You can click on that, follow the directions, you can put in your information, we'll get the message, and we'll see what we can do to help, you know, the town residents. If anybody has a business, someone wants to set up promotion and daycares, whatever it is, horse camps, anything like that, we're open. Again, behind me, we have the Tree of Life that's filling up fast, so if any residents want to post some things there, or put their businesses, or put names of people that have done anything in the town, we're open for that as well. There's different levels and sizes of different leaves and acorns, et cetera. Also had a conversation with a contractor in town with respect to bringing in a little bit more grass to try and improve that grassy area that we had last year for the concerts. It was a nicely, nicely grassed area, very soft, no rocks, no debris, no glass, no sticks, no roots, nothing. So I'm in conversation with that contractor now to try and bring some fill in. I did speak to Andy today with respect to that, so we're trying to work some things out to try and improve a little bit more of the surface area there. As well as, you know, I want to bring up the stage again, and I keep haunting you guys, you know, I'd love to hear some discussion with respect to that. I know we touched on it briefly last time that I spoke, but I'd love to have the community involvement and get a stage and see what we can do to step it up a little bit this year. I think it would be great to bring the community together, that's for sure. Also, we have the car show coming up this year in Bingo. I think the Bingo's going to be in August, and the car show in September, keep your eye on the newsletter. Those are events that the Astronite Foundation is also hosting. On another note, I did run into somebody just the other night regarding the contractor that's installing the speed sign. He mentioned to me that it's being installed on 186, but it's being installed in a swell. And with the weather that it's been lately, the swell's been six to eight inches underwater. So as soon as the water goes down, they'll be able to drill a hole, it's about a 10 to 12 inch diameter, a hole four foot deep. So to try and drill that underwater and put concrete, and it would just jeopardize the strength of the concrete. So that's going to be done. I know Gary had made a promise about it getting installed, but it's been assembled, and it should be up just as soon as the ground allows it to be installed. So on that note, that pretty much ends my time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, George. All right, any other board reports? Seeing none, council member comments?
Yeah, I'll start as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just have very, very little, so it's going to go kind of quick. Just some notices, the main thing I want to talk about is on the agenda later on here. We have hazmat at the park on the 29th with shredding and prescription drug drop-off. We have a special code hearing this coming Tuesday on the 28th, 10 a.m. here at Town Hall. The Flowmobile will also be here on the 28th. If you need to use their services, give Deborah a call and set up an appointment. And I had a note in here about how George was going to hold up the speed pole while the concrete dried for a while, but he kind of beat me to the punch on that one. So it's, it's not going in because of the weather, and I just want everybody to realize that because we're really, you know, really want to see this thing work, you know, and put them in various places around town. And just to give Andy a heads up, I'm going to be talking to him shortly about the 362 fireworks and how we are going to be incorporating what the Drainage Committee fill recommendations into the town policy, if that requires a resolution on our part, or if it's just something that needs to be enacted. So I'll be working with Andy on that in the future. And that's pretty much all I have, the rest I have during the, during the actual meeting.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Would you like to go next?
I'll go. Well, lost, I think we lost about three-quarters of the room. Well, that shouldn't diminish any of our comments this evening. I'd like to begin with this meeting on the 22nd of June will be the last meeting before July 4th. And that brings me to my first issue, fireworks. Per state law, there are only three days that we are allowed to set off fireworks. And the most recent that's affecting us now is July 4th. We have a code provision that specifically prohibits every other day other than the days that state law allows fireworks. I wrote about this in my recent article, and, and what I'm trying to get to the point is that you can only set off the fireworks on the 4th of July, not the 3rd, not the 2nd, not the 1st. And every time I've gone out of town on the weekend of 4th of July, my phone rings with people calling about fireworks, and I have to take action on this. I hope people will understand that it's not a heavy hand, it's because we are an equestrian town. And there are certain medications that people can give their horses to help calm them. But those medications have no effect once the horse is already scared. So, and, and our horse owners don't know when somebody's going to be launching fireworks. There's no public mechanism saying, "Hey, I'm going to be launching fireworks, please get your horses ready, get your animals ready." We don't have anything like that. This is about respecting our horse owners that have to prepare their horses sometimes a day before. So it's really important to recognize the reason behind the firework prohibition in the town. Second, I want to talk about the Rural Public Arts and Design Advisory Board. They're doing the Beauty and the Ranches photo contest, they're taking applications. And this is one photo per person in the household, provide a photo caption. The photos must be eight by 10 in landscape settings. They must be set in the highest definition and the highest resolution possible. No previous photos will be accepted. And you must, the entries must be submitted with the town's entry form, and contact Susan Cuts for submitting your photos. Rural Public Arts and Design Advisory Board's also working on the front page of The Rancher. I thought I had a copy here, here's a copy. And actually, you can see, one of the newest effects is pages are now white inside, which will allow us to put in color photos, which is going to be really good. And they're redesigning the cover of the Southwest Rancher. Board's also working on a town flag and the monument in front of the Town Hall to get that upgraded. Moving on with the incinerator issue, I want to thank Debbie Green for speaking out at the advisory boards about the concern for our community, and Mary Ann Allen and Richard Ramcharatar, thank you. Your input is very important for this critical issue for our town. Every member of this council is opposed to this, and we need the community's help to help communicate this. I, I looked at it from a perspective of groundwater contamination. We've already had the problem with Vista View landfill and how it affected Sunshine Ranches years and years and years ago before we were a town. And the fallback position would be to pipe in water if, when the groundwater's contaminated. But that's not a reasonable solution because we have farms, we have our ranches, and paying for the water is just going to really increase the costs on our neighbors. The more logical place to put this would be where the saltwater has already contaminated the groundwater, further east, maybe at the wheel brader place, someplace where the groundwater has a contamination from the saltwater, not where we have fresh water. I guess probably about 90% of our homes have a well. I know I do. I'm down probably close to 200 feet. But the shallower wells are, this could be a big problem for them. Moving on, we recently had budget talks. One of the issues that was presented that I really liked was breaking up on the trim notice, the millage for showing how the public safety portion of the budget is, what percentage of that is actually included with the millage. So our residents, our taxpayers can see what effect the public safety contract is on there and how significant it is, especially when residents are saying, "Hey, we need to bring in more police officers," or something like that. And when you see the significance of what it is to the millage, hopefully you can see what we have to deal with when we're planning out the budgets. I'd like to add that I was kind of upset about some of our funding projects getting vetoed, wasn't a very good idea. I think our town needs these drainage projects, it's really important to help drain our mostly flooded town right now. And then one other issue that was brought up that I really like would be adding a drainage impact fee if that is feasible. That would only apply to new homes that are being constructed, whether it's a tear-down-and-rebuild or new home that's being built on raw land. It would not affect an existing home where people are living. This is just for new homes. That's something I would really like to look into. That kind of wraps it up for me.
Perfect. Thank you, Kevin.
Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me start out by saying that I had the privilege of sitting in with the South Florida Regional Planning Council's meeting down in Key Largo. Their main concern is same as ours, it's flooding. They're working real hard on coming up with an overall plan for South Palm Beach, for all of Broward and for North Dade. They claim that within the next 15 years that this will be oceanfront property out here. The Corps of Engineers says that they need a four-foot seawall, starting in Orlando, going all the way, going all the way around through Key West, all the way back up towards Tampa to prevent the sea from coming in. That's unheard of, there's no money for that. Then they say that they need 32 pumps to pump the water out and into the new reservoirs that they think about building. Each pump, $82 million. They say it'd take 15 years. They were talking about that five years ago, still don't have the money. We are faced with an issue out here. We're doing everything we can on our part for drainage so that our neighborhoods are drained, but it's not going to be any good if we can't get the C-11 canal and the rest of the places out here drained. So I'm really happy to see that. I will be asking if I can show a slight presentation at the next Comprehensive Planning Board, probably about 15 minutes. The program was an hour and a half long, and I've got it broke up into two or three-minute segments where they talk about what's going to happen. One of the gentlemen, Senator Geller, says that he's going to invest in houseboats and arcs so that he can survive. And, you know, we laugh about that, but the sad part of it is, when that water comes in and there's no place for it to go, we're in trouble. Next, I just wanted to say to all the boards, you know, our volunteer boards, the members on those boards sit there and they give their time. And we'll look at the ed board, what they just did with the students, that was a lot of work for a solid year. And I still see one of the board members sitting here. And to give those kids, I believe, $1,700 apiece, that means a lot, an honest lot. And this is the biggest group they've ever had, and they work their butts off, and the students work their butts off, but it's the board themselves that actually makes this work. The Comprehensive Planning Board working real hard on procedures to help with the flooding, they're looking at that. You just heard George mention the drainage, they're looking at ways to stop fill from being brought in illegally and what you can or can't do to stop that. You know, I say that if you make an example out of one or two, the rest will fall in line. I want to say thank you to the Fire Board for their input, for a new contract that we have coming up with Davie, and that'll be taking place. To December for her Parks Board for making our parks more user-friendly. I think we're going to look at putting a canopy over some of those today, part of the things that are coming up, and our parks will be more useful. Add to what David spoke about, about the contest, the pictures that are chosen from this contest go into our yearly calendar that we sell here. And in the back page are the ones that weren't chosen for the absolute page. So it'd be quite an honor to have your picture there on those pages. So, you know, get your application in, and let's see if we can't, you know, have some great, great pictures. The speed trailers, I haven't got many requests. I just got one the other day, and I sent it to Tom, and we'll see where it goes. The ones that Gary's talking about, the fixed ones, I'd like to see a bunch of those around town. There's a lot of through streets, there's a lot of cut-through traffic on all the streets. If we could get eight or 10 of those around town, and they're really not that expensive, but it'll remind people to slow down. You're not going to get those that are crazy and fly by all the time. But our residents sometimes, and I was with someone the other night that was going down 166, and I look over and he's running 40 mile an hour. And I bumped him, I said, "Why aren't you going a little fast?" And whoops, but you forget. But these signs will remind us. I really think that these are a great thing for us. I think that, you know, we should get more and more of these around town. And the, the, the people, our residents, the people that are working now, Richard, Mary Ann and stuff, these are the people we need to fight this sewer, I mean, this waste management, waste energy plant, smoke stack, whatever you want to call it, these are the people we need. So I want you to understand that council doesn't want this, but with the residents' help, I think we can fight it, and I think we can keep it away from us. But we do have a seat at the table, and we've asked the mayor if he'd be the one that represents the town at that seat. So we're going to fight our butts off to keep it out of here. And with that, that's all I got, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Jim. Just a few, few items that I'll add on to that. I appreciate all the feedback that I've gotten on the sound ordinance through the workshop, through other emails, phone calls, things like that. So I think I've now at the point where I've got a good set of information. I'm going to be putting together some recommendations, and we'll see, we'll get something drawn up, and then obviously it'll come to the council, and, you know, you all can weigh in on it and adjust it as it's needed. So that's, we'll go to the next step on that. Just a, a note that on, at this meeting, we were planning on going over the public safety contract that we have with Davie for both the fire and fire rescue and our, our police protection. The one contract covers it all, it's a 10-year contract, it's a very large contract, there's a lot of stuff in it. And myself, and I think probably the rest of the council, really wanted to have more time to go over it. It's a big contract, it's our single largest contract that we sign, and both from a money standpoint, from a time standpoint. So we wanted to be able to look at it and really understand it, make sure that we understood it before we brought it forth here. So, so it's been rescheduled for August, and it'll be back. So just a note about that. George, I don't see George anymore, did George leave? Anyway, I heard him on the stage, we're working on, we've talked to administration, they're looking for, looking to come up with a stage, so we're working on that. And just a quick note about the, the inter-local agreement and the incinerators. The staff is assisting me in setting up meetings, we've already got several meetings on the books. So we're going to begin that process of meeting with other local leaders, trying to understand their view and trying to build a coalition that will be effective for us. So just a heads up on that, that that is underway, those meetings are, some of them are already scheduled and on the books, so. All right, and with that, I think council comment is closed. Any legal comment this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In case number 12-28819, Town of Southwest Ranches versus Pembroke Pines, we need to announce and schedule a shade session. And I believe if we get some dates, I'm going to ask, Russell has already mentioned that we need to get some dates so we can go ahead and schedule that.
Yes, so council, as we relayed to you, we needed to schedule this shade session and asked everyone to bring their calendars for this evening. If we can suggest a couple of dates possibly for as early as next week, and maybe schedule this for sometime next week if that's possible. So I don't know if you're prepared to all discuss that tonight, but if we could look at possibly maybe next, either Wednesday or Thursday, which would be the 28th or the 29th? Both work for me. I know we have the Sunshine Ranches HOA meeting is scheduled for the 28th, so perhaps the 29th. I don't believe we have any advisory board meetings scheduled that evening. I think the calendar...
Sunshine Ranches doesn't start until 7:30, so we could have it before that.
That's true. I just don't know how much time you might want to have for that, so I didn't want to, but sure.
Either evenings. I mean, I would prefer not to conflict with Sunshine Ranches, but, so I think the 29th is probably preferred. the 29th is probably preferable, but either one is open.
Okay. The rest of council?
Yes, uh, the 28th, 29th, either one. That's fine with me.
Okay, so we're leaning on the 29th at this point.
Must do that.
Councilmember Kozinski?
29th, 29th probably, uh, let me, let me check one thing. I checked one thing. I was, um, I have a flight next week. Just trying to make sure that it's not on the 29th.
Either day works, Mayor Russell.
Okay, thank you. Just waiting on, on Councilmember Kozinski. And as far as time, if, uh, 29th works for Councilmember Kozinski, so preferred times, 7 o'clock, 6:30?
7 o'clock would be much easier for me.
I think 7 o'clock's fine for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we just want to, just want to confirm with-
Yeah, my flight's on the 30th, so I'm going on 29th.
Okay, so the 29th, next Thursday at 7:00 PM, we will have that, uh, shade session here at Town Hall.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard, anything?
No further legal comments.
Great, thank you. Andy? Welcome back, Andy.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have no comments, other than I want to thank Russell and the rest of the staff for filling in the way they did while I was out of town. Uh, you know, it's not a vacation if you have to worry about everything every day. And so I, I do get to go away with some peace of mind, knowing that things are in good hands, and I appreciate it. So thank you for that.
Awesome, yeah. We're very fortunate. Thank you all. All right. Uh, item number 10.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, creating the Solid Waste Authority Advisory Board for the purpose of advising and updating the Town Council on any matters related to the development of the Broward County Solid Waste Authority, authorizing the Town Administrator to implement the creation of the board and providing an effective date.
Okay, before we, before we get a motion in a second on this, it's a little bit out of, uh, Robert's rules, but, uh, I'm going to do it anyway. So, um, and you'll know why in a second. So, sorry.
Remember that one, I do that.
I know, I know, I know. I'll pay for it later. Um, but, uh, I, I, David, you actually made a comment last council meeting I've been thinking about, and it makes a ton of sense to me. Um, I'm not sure that it makes sense to have a town board here because of sunshine laws and what that's going to do from a restriction standpoint with our residents being able to communicate with one another. Um, I, I, I just think that that is going to, number one, open them up. It's going to be extremely difficult to not talk about it outside, you know, as you, as you just happen to see people at council meetings, other board meetings, things like that. And so you open yourself up to, um, significant penalties, um, not even meaning to do it. And the other thing is if, if they stick to it, as I believe they would, it would really restrict the flow of information back and forth between the key folks. So, um, I would prefer to, um, request that, more informally, that the, the HOAs, similar the way they got together and had the President's Council in the past, that they get together on their own and develop a, uh, a, a committee among themselves that's not sanctioned by the town, so that they can meet as they want to meet. If they run into one another at Publix, they can, or Tom Thumb or something, they can still have the conversations they need to have without any legal consequence to it. Um, they would certainly, I don't think there's any problem with them meeting here at Town Hall. If they let us know, we can allow that. And, um, um, I just think that's, that would be a much, um, freer way for them to go about their business and do their thing. Yeah.
So what I've wrote up, the, uh, the idea of, uh, board meeting or advisory-
I propose- An advisory board meeting. I was also looking at as a way for them to pass us information, educate us and inform us. How would you suggest that occur?
Well, I would say this, that whenever they meet, I want to be there. Um, so I would hope that they would let us know when it's there. They could certainly, I mean, if they want to do it in a formal way, they could give a, a, a report, just like, uh, any of the other boards do. Like, like the Astronite Foundation is not a, a sanctioned, uh, board of the town. It's, it's a separate entity, um, but they come up and give a board report, so I would, I would think they could do the same.
I'd like to attend the meetings.
Yeah, yeah. I certainly would hope, and I would expect. I mean, we've, we've got a great partnership with them, um, and I, I, we would, you know, want to be able to pass on any information that maybe I've heard or anybody else in the council has heard to them, and we definitely want to hear from them what they've discovered and what they're finding as well.
Good.
So, I don't think there's any issue with that. Richard, we're-
No, there's, there's no issue with that, Mayor, and we can do it. Like, Russell and I was just talking, we can give them as much allotted time during board comments-
Yeah.
-as you do the Astronite as well. And I think that will help with the flow of information and give them a, an avenue to present it to the council.
Perfect, perfect. Awesome, awesome. What about, what else?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Steve, the HOAs together, they talk to each other. How do they get that back? Just the same way they do now when they present? When they come back?
I guess, yeah, I guess what I would say is, I know when I was the president of Country Estates, um, you know, two or three of us got together and we organized all the HOAs to get together for a President's Council, where all the presidents of all the HOAs got together. And we, we worked on a number of things, um, you know, uh, most of it was election-related, but there were other issues in town that frankly, we were not happy with what the council was doing. And so we organized a little bit and, and, uh, and spoke to them as a group. And, uh, you know, so I, I would anticipate this being the same thing. I would, I would hope that, um, I, what I really would like to see is participation from every HOA that wants to participate, you know? Um, the three or four biggest ones, certainly, I hope they all participate, but certainly the other ones as well, that want to participate, that would be open to them all. Um, but, uh, but that they, I, I think they, you know, they're all vibrant organizations. I think they have the ability to organize themselves. They've done it in the past. I think they can do it now. It's not, it's, we're not, we're not creating anything that needs to go to the state of Florida for approval or anything like that. It's just a group of neighbors and residents that are getting together to talk about a particular topic on a regular basis.
Would we have any representatives at the Broward County meetings, uh, when they had their council meetings and discussions and stuff? Would, would they represent us there?
No, no, no. I mean, they would be welcome. I don't know, those have, meetings have not been set up yet, so I can't say who the, who's going to be on the invite list. I mean, there was the mayor's, uh, and, and her vice mayor, who I asked to please represent me because I couldn't make it. He was turned away, so I can't guarantee who will be allowed in the room.
I've heard stories about that, yes.
Yeah, can't be guaranteed who will be allowed in, who won't be, but I would, you know, if it was up to me, I would certainly want them to participate. Yeah, Andy?
Yeah, the only thing I'd say to that mayor is, those are all public meetings, so they would be entitled to attend.
Great.
Perhaps not participate, depending on, on what the meeting is, but the meetings should all be open to the public, so they should be able to attend that way.
Great.
And, and we should, we'll normally get notice of that, and so that's something we're happy to provide to the group.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, if I may-
Yes.
I have some reservations on that.
Okay.
Let me express why. The, the town provides structure and, and responsibility and meeting times that you can pretty much strictly adhere to. And I realize the sunshine law, uh, complicates things. I, I get, and for good reason it does.
Right, sure.
Um, I have had quite a few people call me about wanting to join the, uh, advisory board that we were planning on having after, uh, Bob's excellent presentation after our last meeting. And, uh, I've, I've got them set up, ready to go to that, uh, you know, to go to that. Um, I, I, I like the structure of, the town backing it like we do with all the other advisory boards, as opposed to an ad hoc, uh, committee that may or may not, may or may not take place and may or may not have structure. I'm not saying our residents can't pull it off. That's not, I'm not suggesting that. But, but I do know that it, once you put it in place through the town, there, the structure is there. And we do, we'd have somebody assigned to it, and we would have, uh, you know, follow Robert's Rules of Orders. Uh, there, there wouldn't be, you know, yelling, pointing fingers, and there's already a lot of nonsense going on right now. I'm following on social, on certain social media sites where people are, uh, there's, let's just say that there's some, there's some bad actors going on, on, in, in, in the midst of all this, oh, this is not true, we're not getting it, you know, blah, 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 when we know this train's coming down the tracks, you know, and stuff like that. And I'm really kind of, I've reserved about not having the town involved in it. I, I liked the idea of, as, as an advisory board.
Okay.
With the caveat that there is, uh, sunshine, the sunshine laws.
Right.
You know, am I, am I, am I putting, am I digging my heels in? No, I'm not. But I'm giving you my opinion.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate it. There's definitely two sides to it. I actually, um, part of, I mean, I thought about what David said, and the more I thought about, the more it made sense. The thing that really kind of drove me that way was I actually got a call from two different residents that wanted to be on the boards, but specifically called me to say, "Don't put me on the board because I don't want to be restricted by sunshine laws. I want to be able to talk to everybody." So, please don't put me on the board." And they were people that were involved in it. And that, that kind of like, all right, then that's a real problem. So that's, that's kind of-
Well, they don't have to be appointed to the board. They can attend and then-
Exactly, exactly.
-talk to anybody.
Correct.
You know, we could still put the structure of the board in place with a certain amount of members, and this doesn't preclude the public from coming and then talking about it all they want to anybody they want in Publix or wherever. I mean, you could have it both ways.
Yes.
You know, I, I just, I just like the structure of the, the town provides for something like this.
Yep.
I think it's more formal, and I-
It's a valid point.
And you put it, you put it in front of the Broward County Commission, it's from the Town of Southwest Ranches, uh, you know, the whole, I, I think it just adds more permanence or, I'm, I'm trying to find the right word.
Right. I, I really, I want to be clear that I really feel like this board is, I, I don't want to, I don't want to, um, at least from my impression, I, I do not see this board presenting to the Broward County Commission.
Well, I mean, attending-
That the town, the town will, and representatives of the town will do that. You know, I'll do that. Um, and any, you know, the rest of the council that wants to participate will do that. Um, but I don't see, I don't see this board doing that. Um, if individuals from the board want to speak their piece there, absolutely. Um, but I would not, I would not, uh, anticipate that this board, as a board, would make some sort of a presentation to Broward County.
I, I didn't envision that either. I just meant, I just meant in, in form of an attendance to keep the, uh, council and the other members of the board and public up to speed as to what's going on.
Yeah.
I, I implied otherwise. That wasn't my intent. You know, we want you up there. You're, you're the better, you're, you're the great speaker.
Thanks, I think.
But I do like the, I, and I don't want to keep repeating myself, but I do like the structure of the, of having the town backing it and using-
Okay, I mean, it's a valid point. Valid point. Um, uh, what do you, what do you all think? What would you prefer?
Steve, let me ask you a quick question. Uh, and Gary, if you have a group of people, and you said you had two that, that didn't want to be on the board because they wanted to talk to each other, if one was on the board and some, uh, somebody else was on the board, but that friend of theirs was talking to them and the person, the other person, isn't that a conduit back and forth that, that's not, can't you get in trouble if you go, and if I speak to you and then I turn around and speak to him about what you said?
Yeah, that's a problem.
You still can get in trouble, correct?
That's a problem.
Right, it's a problem, right. It, it's, so how do you solve that, whether it's a board, uh, but it doesn't affect if it's not a board? It doesn't affect if it's the group of people doing it themselves? There's no consequence to that?
Right, well, what, what you would do is, the people who are assigned to the board would not commun, be, be in communication with casual, uh, other people in Publix, let's say. But that doesn't preclude 20 other people who live in the town from attending the meeting and talking about it all they want, wherever they want, because they don't actually belong on the board, but they're part of the public who are in, involved in the meetings.
But what if they came to you and talked to you, and then they come to me and talk to me and told me what you said? I mean, you know, I mean, just-
Well, that, that's, that's the case for anything.
Right.
Okay, I mean, we have people, I'm, I'm sure there's people that talk to you about drainage, and there's people that come to talk to me about drainage.
Yeah.
And they don't mention that they talk to each other. They're not being, they're not being a conduit. They're, they're just advocating their position or what have you, you know, something like that.
Got a question for Richard or Russell. So, I'm leaning in the direction of less formality and, you know, allowing people free exchange. Now, if we, let's just say, uh, once a month, they decided to meet at the barn and the town approved it. What happens when the council all shows up at a non-advertised meeting like that? I mean, I know you'd notice it, but then it, doesn't it start bringing back in sunshine?
No, it's, it's noticed for us.
Okay.
It's noticed so that we would not have an issue all being there, but it does not-
Correct. No, no, you're, no, that's, that's correct.
Okay. That's correct, Mayor, yeah. Okay, I'm just trying to minimize any risks.
Right. David, what do you think?
Uh, I, I see Gary's point about having some structure, but I'm, um, looking something more open, where people can have a lot more conversations, and that's why I brought up the sunshine law. Because, I mean, I mean, if we have Mary Ann Allen on there and she wants to talk to another member because she's really active in it, and she may be an appointee on that board, um, that could really present a problem for these people that want to help us out.
Well, you don't make them an appointee.
Yeah.
They're there as a guest.
Yeah. I'm hearing from the audience at home, nobody's speaking into their microphones.
All right, all right. So, um, all right, so that, that's kind of like a base discussion. With that discussion in mind, is there a motion on the table?
Bob, this was your idea, if you don't want to go forward with it, I-
I'd rather go with an open format, to be honest. I, I'm not married to creating a board. I like the structure as well, but I want as much free exchange as possible. So, I'm okay with dropping the board idea.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with that also. I, I would like to mention though, as, not as a caveat, but as a suggestion-
Yeah.
-that if we find out that this doesn't work-
Yeah.
-that we can always go back and create the board.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
I agree to that. I agree to that.
If it, if it doesn't gel into an organization-
Right, that, that's what I'm afraid of.
Yeah, yeah, no, great point. Yep.
And Mayor, just to have a clean record, I would, um-
Should we vote?
-suggest that we do a motion to deny.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion to deny my own recommendation.
That's unique.
Correct.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right. So, um, uh, is there any discussion from the public on this item?
Um, I, I hear all the sides. Um, I would just, I don't know if, if, now that it's less, looking to be less formal, it's less, looking to be less formal, is there a way for the town to, to, there to be a town staff to help in getting that information back and forth between the information, obviously the town is going to receive information from the, whatever, the Broward cities or wherever it's coming from, so that that information can be shared, so that it can be discussed at whatever, and then at some point, when it's, when it's the right time or whatever, maybe then the town, you all will be, be participating, I'm sure, at these meetings. At some point, then, does the town hold a workshop, where then it can be discussed, like the findings and everything from the group, and then shared at a workshop kind of setting, and that way it can, you can kind of have that more formal piece to go along with the informal committee.
Right, good point.
Jim Lasky. I think you need to do a lot of brainstorming on this. There are so many different methodologies already in place all over the world. You know, for instance, in Sweden, they will send your pet to a crematorium or one of these burners. That's the kind of thing that would repulse a lot of people that I know and you know, okay? This, the very idea of that is repulsive. And you'd need to do a lot of bouncing off somebody else, because no matter how smart you think you are, you can always learn something from anybody.
Sure.
And you're, you're going to have to defend your argument somehow and make you think in a different way. So you need that constant back and forth, and you could either start off with some good research and then balance it along the way, and it, it's obvious that this is bad news. But we got to convince a hell of a lot of people that are already involved with utilizing incinerators in the state of Florida. And I think we've spent so much money on cleaning up the water in the Everglades, that it'll become the kind of thing that the governor better say, hey, wait a minute, I got to protect my investment. That investment they got is on the plus side of the balance sheet, okay? And everything we can do to screw it up is on the negative side of the balance sheet. And I don't know where everybody gets the idea, because the, the plant that they got over there, the, what the hell they called it?
Wheel abrator?
Wheel abrator, I'm sorry, I forget things. The wheel abrator plant doesn't matter because it's saltwater intrusion there. You're putting the same bad chemicals into saltwater, that's still part of the food chain. You know, there's plenty of little juvenile fish that are saltwater, that are absorbing this stuff, and somebody comes along and eats them, okay? And now, the tuna fish that's on the east coast, he's getting sicker and sicker because he ate the mullet, or the mackerel, or wherever the hell else you, you know, came in contact with this stuff. So it all counts, whether you're on the east side or the west side, or if you're in the middle of the United States, because we've got lakes, and we've got lakes that got rivers attached to them. And that goes into the Gulf of Mexico, which is a major breeding ground for all the fish, and they come right up out of the Gulf, go down around the coast down there, if the long liners off of Cuba, don't catch them. But, you know, there's just a lot of things that interconnect, and if everybody understood it, it's a lot bigger problem for anybody.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Yes, so, when I lived in Dania Beach, I, I was appointed to the airport advisory board, and that was set up to fight against the, the interlocal agreement that the city had with Broward County. They built, they built the runway anyway after a lot of, lot of litigation, and a lot of people got devastated with the, the toxic fumes coming out from the aircraft when they came landing from west to east. So, my suggestion is that the, an advisory board would pretty much, my experience with it was that it really tied our hands to, to an extent. I mean, the most that we were able to do was meet once a month, and we had speakers and people from the county coming in and speaking to us, but we really never got together as such, outside of that, to, to really make, do anything. I mean, we, we had to do research on our own, come back in a month later, and, you know, the, the attendance also was, was an issue, because people, some people lost interest after a while. So, I, I think that you're, you're heading in the right direction with having this as an informal setting, but what I would suggest is that we have the use of the facility here, where we can bring information, we can make presentations. I think Dan, when Sunshine Ranches had their homeowners association meeting, Mary Ann and I came here and we were able to put up a PowerPoint presentation for everyone, and that got, you know, some people's interest and stuff like that, and I think that would be helpful. I also think that if you have the homeowners association groups for the town, I think we do need to come together at some point, you know, and share information with each other, and then, and then work together as a team as opposed to a splintered group. So, that would be a suggestion. And, and yeah, we can have some structure to this. We can set up days when we come here and communicate via email and stuff like that, and what I've been doing is gathering information and sending it out to you guys, you know, and, and I think that's helpful. But I think we need to bring our community together, not only our community, because this incineration problem shouldn't be in anyone's backyard. It, it's, it's really terrible for the environment, it's terrible for everyone's health, and we, we need to approach this from a county standpoint to get rid of incineration and, and work towards zero waste. And there, there was a case some time ago with Bergeron and, and.
Waste management.
Waste management. You know, I won't go into the details about that, but.
Richard, I just want to keep you focused on whether we have an internal board or.
Sure, okay, well.
Okay.
So, I, I would suggest that if we have, if we can have use of this facility here and get together with the other HOAs, come in here and make presentations to inform you, inform the public, I think that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Noel Hollingsworth. I remember back when we started fighting the dump, the original president's council was formed because of the dump and to get everyone involved within the, and I think the presidents need to be involved, of each of the homeowners association and their boards. But we also need the cooperation of the towns, so like a permanent request for all documents that come from the county to the town that, that are relevant to the dump, not the dump, but the incinerator, be made available to an ad hoc group. And the group that formed to fight the dump had about 150 members that existed between Sheridan and Griffin and 27 and Flamingo. And those people got information from all over the country, because as they traveled, some were traveling salesmen, others were pilots, et cetera, et cetera, military individuals. And we were able to get information from various real sources, not like a newspaper article or something like that, but scientific papers and stuff like that. And that's the way it has to be fought, is we got to hit them with real facts.
Right.
And if we have the meetings here, and the town is to give us the information that is available on, say, like a, a permanent type situation instead of a request each time, and the council is for that, then I think that, you know, and the council comes to the meetings, which happen as often as possible, and keep the people in, involved, because it's not something that's going to happen next week or next month. It's going to take a long time for this incinerator.
Right.
Where we don't end up having to lay down in front of the bulldozers. That's what I want to avoid.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Good evening. John Garrati, 162nd Avenue. Regarding the advisory board, I think some of the residents are correct in the fact that a little bit more loose, not so strict on the Roberts Rules of Order gives the information gathering a little more freedom. Noel just mentioned the fact that back in the days with the dump, they had pilots, you know, folks that are not just here, spreading message, gathering information, being able to share it with them. For example, I myself, I'm involved in Indian River County. I bought a piece of real estate there. They're going through something with the water plant, not the water plant, the FPNL, their power used to be right on the water. It's called Big Blue. And in just mentioning the town of Southwest Ranches, the dump, I'm gathering stuff, and I go there once or twice a month because I have to maintain my real estate, but it's an interesting topic that when you're on the road and you're not bound to an advisory board, you can gather a lot more information, you can spread it amongst all you guys here that have way more experience on the legality of things, and of course, the, the boards themselves have more direct connection, not the boards, I'm sorry, the HOAs know their residents more than anybody, that can knock on a door and say, hey, and they're not bound to the stuff that you guys are bound to. So, once a month or once every other month, formal workshops regarding this specific topic is how you guys can be included without having that board being restricted for the information. But another thing I want to say about the incinerator, just thinking outside the box, because I, I kind of do that. I don't, I hope we can stop the incinerator, I hope they don't put it anywhere. But you know, I think ahead. I was involved in the auto industry for a very long time, and a lot of the problems, the cafe standards with the submissions and all this, I think it's not the incinerator. I think if you can clean the incinerator, I know, I'm not an engineer, putting some sort of a filter on this thing, reducing the ash, getting it to zero, I'm not an engineer, I'm, this is called wishful thinking, but something other than that, I don't know. Knocking on doors, gathering the information, not having our hands tied, letting the HOAs speak as they do, whatever we can do, sign me up. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. Any, any further council comment?
I would like to mention that one of the things that concerns me, and this has really had nothing to do with this exactly.
Right.
But we all got the same memo, and that was the endorsement of the ILA, and at the top of the list was Sierra Club, League of Women Voters, and the Broward League of Cities. And that really got my attention.
Mm-hmm.
And, and not in a, not in a meaningful way.
Right, right.
It was, I was really kind of, kind of concerned that this was, something's not right here.
Yeah.
You know, something like that.
Yeah, yep. Just a couple of comments. Obviously, I have not had a chance to talk to Andy about this, but I would not anticipate, and you, please, correct me if I go straight here, I would not anticipate that there would be an assigned staff member for this group. However, I would anticipate that all the council members, including myself, would be bringing information when we come to these meetings for the latest, latest information we have. I don't know, Andy, did you see that some other way?
I'm, I'm going to kind of split that in half and say, I would want to assign a staff person as a liaison.
Okay.
Not necessarily to attend all their meetings, but to make sure that the information that we get gets passed down properly.
Perfect.
For example, those meeting notices, when, when that group is going to meet, we want to make sure that they know. So I think it's very important to have a staff member as well as an appointed person within that group, self-appointed, you know, by the group, to be the liaison so that we can ensure good communication back and forth.
Right.
I think that, that would be critical.
Okay.
Not necessarily to attend the meetings.
Even better.
But, but to communicate back and forth.
Perfect, perfect, even better. Okay, great. And then the idea of a workshop, I love that. I don't, so, so what, what I anticipate, obviously there's going to be time, just like there is tonight, you know, for that communication back and forth when we do the board reports, and I would hope that every time we, this is twice a month, so it's, it's, you know, it's pretty regular. We would be able to have that communication of, of things going back and forth, especially that group reporting to us. We'll be at a lot of those meetings, so we'll hear a lot of it firsthand. And then, when there is like a decision point or an organization point, or some, some point in the process where we really need to come together and make a decision, I would anticipate a workshop at that point. I wouldn't anticipate a workshop every month, but, you know, as needed, we would, we would have, we would have that workshop so that we could then, as a council, you know, take more of a formal action on what we want to do. So, all right, what else? Yeah.
Yeah, just to, to reiterate some of the opposition that, I know I spoke exclusively on groundwater. There is additional issues here that are involved, that this is going to be running 24 hours a day. They're going to have 200-foot smokestacks, it's going to create an eyesore, the, the noise is going to be going on, and the, in addition to the water, it's, it's, it's just a complete mess. I wanted to say another word, it almost came out, but it was on the tip of my tongue, but I stopped. But it's a mess.
Good job.
It's a cluster mess.
There you go.
All right, thanks.
All right. Anything else, council? All right, please, if we can call the roll. So, remember, a positive vote here is to deny the action.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion to deny is approved.
All right, item number 11, please.
Item number 11 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, agreeing to piggyback onto the school board of Miami-Dade County contract pricing for the purchase and installation of a galvanized steel dome roof shade port structure and related products and services for the Country Estates Fishing Hole Park from Industrial Shade Ports, Inc., in the amount of $34,478, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on this item? Is there any discussion?
Thank you, December.
Yep. Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item? Seeing none?
I would like to ask.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I would like to ask, December, we approved also redoing the mulch, will we be getting a, another package on that later?
At some other time or no?
Yes, sir, you will, just as soon as possible, but this has to happen first. What will happen prior to all of it maybe, is the, the bad stuff that's already in the playground will be removed. I'm working on that. I need one further quote for the removal, and once they get the shade structure up, then we'll redo the surfacing. And once we start working on all of that, we'll close the playground for a few weeks. The timeline for the shade port is like 10 days to 14 days after we get an approved purchase order.
And this, just to clarify on my own mind, this isn't like the one at, at Equestrian Park or at Colusa Corners where it has to be taken down?
Yes, it'll have to be taken down, and that's very simply done nowadays. We do have a local company that does it for us. It's minimal cost, they're expert at it, they get it down in, you know, 20 minutes.
If a hurricane's coming, they.
Yeah, we take it down in the event of a hurricane, and then we put it up at the end of storm season. We don't put it back up after the storm leaves. We wait until the end of the season. We don't take them up and, or take them down and put them back up for every storm.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll be seeing you soon about the surfacing material.
All right, great, thank you. All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Item number 12, please.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, consenting to the City of Cooper City providing water services to 6125 Stallion Way, real property lying within the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town, providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the City of Cooper City, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item from the council? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And a motion to adjourn.
Excellent. Thank you all for coming out.